The time is now six o'clock on February 4th, 2025. This is the day and time set for the Westland Planning, the regular Westland Planning Commission meeting for the month of February. If I can please have the board come to order and rise for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Amen. Thank you very much.
Administration, roll call please.
Durante.
Present.
Folks.
Present.
Hobbs.
Present.
Hopkins.
Present.
Richards.
Present.
Rounds.
Present.
Estachao.
Present.
Swokas.
Present.
Rapoport.
Present.
We have a full house.
Thank you very much, Administration. Next item on the agenda is the approval of minutes for the January meeting.
So moved.
Recognizing the motion by Durante, second by David Swokas. All those in, actually that's gotta be a roll call, correct?
Doesn't have to be, not usually.
Let's just do the roll call. Roll call vote please.
Durante.
Present.
Folks.
Present.
We're doing the approval of the minutes.
Approval of minutes.
I'm here.
Okay.
Here.
Hobbs.
Yes.
Hopkins.
Yes.
Richards.
Yes.
Rounds.
Yes.
Estachao.
Yes.
Swokas.
Yes.
Yes. Thank you very much. At this time, this is the point in time in the meeting where we open up the floor to the citizens if they have any comments that are not related to any of our three items up for today. The podium there has agendas for you. Anybody on my right wish to comment on anything not currently on the agenda? Anyone on my left like to comment on anything not on the agenda? Seeing none, we'll move on to our business items for today. Now calling case number 2272, proposed rezoning from CB3 to Garden Apartment Residential District. Petitioner Stephen Hamad. Administration?
Thank you, Chairman. The property here is comprised of 1.79 acres in size and it's currently undeveloped. The property is Zone CB3, General Commercial Business. The petitioner tonight is requesting to rezone the property to G-A-R, that's our Garden Apartment Residential District, to facilitate the development of a multifamily living Property to the north is Zone CB3, General Commercial Business. This is part of Heinz Drive, Heinz Park, Wayne County Park System. Property to the south is Zone G-A-R, Garden Apartment, and is developed by Riverbend Apartments, you can see it on the screen there. Property to the east is also zoned G-A-R and developed by Riverbend Apartments on the right-hand side. And property to the west is Zone CB3, General Business, and is the site of a retail plaza. The subject property, as mentioned earlier, is currently undeveloped. There has been no inquiries to develop this property in the past six years, which is as long as I've been here. I'm not sure if there were any previous inquiries before my time. There have been no major developments in the area. And the 2018 City of Westland Master Plan Feature Land Use Designation for this site is multifamily residential as well. The Administration and Planning Department recommend approval of this petition. If approved, the petitioner will present a site plan for approval at a later time. However, this is a concept plan that we've been working on together for the past several months. Happy to answer any questions.
Thank you very much. This is a, this is a special land use and therefore a public meeting. If there's anybody, first let's have the petitioner rise and come to the podium.
Hello, I'm Scott Wright. I'm the architect working with the owner Steve Hamadi. He's been detained at another meeting, but I planned on being here to represent him at the meeting and here to answer any questions.
Did you have anything to add to the presentation by the Administration at this time?
No, that site plan you saw was one that I developed with Steve and worked with Mo on to come up with what we think is a good concept for the property in terms of, you know, balance between parking and green space in the buildings. Right now, the idea is that the two buildings that back up to the river would be a lower level walkout to the river and then, and then two stories above that, but from the, from the parking lot, it'd look like a two-story building. And then we'd do two-story tom homes on the east side. Outdoor parking for everything, no garages or anything like that. All units are two bedrooms, one or two baths, depending on which one it is.
Thank you. This being a public meeting, we're going to ask the public who's obviously thronging in attendance today. If I can have you find a seat very close to the podium, we'll call you right back up once we turn it over to the commission. If there's anybody in the audience on my right wish to speak on this matter? Anybody on my left wish to rise and speak on the matter? Hearing none, sir? Thank you very much for your patience. If I can please have you come back up to the podium. Going to open it up to the commission. Is there anybody on the commission on my right that wishes to, to border the petitioner? Seeing none, anybody over on my left? I have two. I'm sorry, was there? I didn't see anybody. Recognizing Deborah Fox and then I'll, then I'll...
I thought that there was another question.
Oh, fantastic. David? Recognizing David Swokas.
Through the chair to the petitioner. When do you, if approved, when do you would expect to break ground on this?
Well, our next step would be to go through site plan approval. So that's going to require full engineering drawings and stormwater detention and all that. We anticipate, he would like to possibly start, say, fall of this year. So it's going to depend on how quickly we move through all the engineering approvals.
Okay, yeah, okay.
But we are going to immediately take the next, you know, he's waiting for this in order to release the engineer to start developing, you know, that into a cohesive engineering plan.
Okay, yeah, it sounds good. I think this is a great use for it and I'm definitely in support of it.
Thank you very much, David. Anybody additionally on my left? Seeing none, anybody on my right? Recognizing Deanna Estachao.
Yes, hi, good evening. I just wanted to say we definitely need housing in Westland, as you probably know. And, and once you get this completed, it'll fill up just like that. But thank you so much for picking Westland and we appreciate the additional modern housing and especially the garden complex. It'll really offset a nice area. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Deanna. Anybody additionally on my right? Seeing none, I just wanted a clarification because I'm not sure I heard it. Did I understand the Administration to have said that the Future Land Use Master Plan is for residential in this area?
Correct.
Okay. And this one is to the developer. I note that the, that the plot here is very unusually shaped. Has that been a challenge for you?
A little bit, yes.
I understand that. All right, thank you very much. If that's all their motion is in order.
So moved.
All right. Recognizing Ruby Richards for that motion and I'll come back to you for a second.
I move to close out case number 2272, proposed rezoning from CB3, General Commercial Business District to G-A-R, Garden Apartment Residential District, parcel number 56040010603, north side of Warren Road, east of Maryman Road. And I would like to close it out and waive normal rights and send to City Council for recommendation for approval contingent upon departmental requirements and recommendations.
David had already seconded that, so we're going to register that as a motion by Ruby Richards, second by David Swokas. And roll call vote please.
Roll call vote to approve case number 2272. Durante.
Yes.
Folks.
Yes.
Hobbs.
Yes.
Hopkins.
Yes.
Richards.
Yes.
Rounds.
Yes.
Estachao.
Yes.
Swokas.
Yes.
Rapoport.
Yes.
Motion is approved.
Congratulations, sir. We've sent this to the City Council with a recommendation for approval and if you can contact the Administration for next steps.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Now calling case number 2271, proposed rezoning from Office Business District to R2 Single Family Residential District. Petitioner is Ejon Cake. If I can please have Ejon or the representative come to the podium. Administration, can you please tell us a little bit about the proposal here?
Yes, thank you, Chairman. The subject parcel here is owned OB, Office Business, and contains .65 acres of land, 20,611 square feet of undeveloped land. The property was recently split by the petitioner, I believe, two or three years ago, from the parcel to the north. This parcel right here, it was all one parcel at one point. And the petitioner split the parcel that contains the medical office with frontage on Vanoye Road and at a later time wanted to come back to rezone this property and develop it. And that's what's occurring today. The petitioner is requesting to rezone the property to R2 Single Family Residential in order to split the property into three buildable parcels, all compliant with the zoning ordinance regulations. You see the parcels there on your screen, the proposed parcels, with the intent to develop single-family dwellings. Property to the north is owned OB, Office Business, and is developed with a medical office building. That's the parcel I was referring to earlier that was combined with this parcel. Property to the east is owned R2 Single Family Residential and is developed by Church. Property to the south is owned R5 Single Family Residential and is developed with single-family homes on the south side of Palmer, also fronting Palmer. And property to the east is owned CB4 Vehicle Service and developed by a vehicle, sorry, vehicle repair shop. The Future Land Use Designation for this site indicates neighborhood commercial office services. And similar to the previous case during my time here, there has been no real inquiries for development of this parcel. However, the petitioner, who is the, who has been the property owner for several years, did approach me and ask if we'd be willing to rezone this parcel to I2, General Industrial. And I'm not sure what the intent was at the time. I think it was trucking-related and obviously that was a non-starter for the city. So this proposal is on the table in front of you today. The Planning Department and Administration are recommending approval of this petition and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you very much. Petitioner? Hi, are you, are you Ejon Cake?
No, I am Edmund Hossimlari. I am a developer and builder for, represent the owner.
Oh, fantastic. Did you have anything that you'd like to add or clarify with the, with the Administration's proposal?
No, we spoke with them a few times, so we agree basically on that because we see to keep that in a district business, but it's a little bit tough in that area, so we thought to jump on a residential.
This is a, this is a special land use in a public hearing, so I am going to ask for participation from the audience that may or may not be interested. If you can find a seat nearby, we'll call you back up and when we, when we turn it back over to the, to the commission. Is there anybody who wishes to speak on this matter to my right? Is there anybody in the audience that wishes to speak on this matter to my left?
I do have a vacant land.
If I can, if I can have you rise to the podium so that we can hear you?
How you doing?
Hi there.
Hi there.
Who do we have this pleasure of hearing today?
My name is James.
Hi, James.
So I own a property like around four, four and a half acre. It's a vacant land, so it looks like whatever this proposed property is, there's a medical building there. So this vacant land, my understanding is this is going to be rezoned, right, to?
Well, we're, we're here to, to determine whether the recommendation will go to the, to the City Council where they will make the decision whether it's rezoned or not. So if you have concerns, this is the forum in which to, well, in which to raise those concerns so that we can hear it and more importantly, so that the developer can also hear your concerns.
Yeah, I'm just, I just want to explore, I want to understand, you know, how that is going to affect nearby properties like mine, you know, which is basically a vacant land. So if there is going to be some kind of development coming in there, whether it is a housing or, you know?
If I can have the Administration speak directly to that, I see him nodding.
Yeah, I'd be happy to meet with you and further discuss this. I'm not sure where your property is. I think it's the wooded one to the north of the medical office. Okay. The petitioner tonight is proposing to rezone this property to residential. Right now, it's Office Business. And if approved, he wants to build three single-family homes.
Three single-family homes, okay.
So I'm not sure, we can, we can discuss how it may or may not impact your property?
Yeah, sure, yeah. If I have some contact information?
Sure, yes, of course.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. I'm going to have the, I'm going to have the petitioner rise and return to the podium, At this time, I'm going to open up the discussion to the, to the board. Anybody on my right wish to speak on this matter? Seeing none, anybody on my left wish to speak on this matter? Excellent. There being no discussion on the matter, the matter is ripe for a, for a motion.
So moved.
If I can please have David Swokas make that motion.
I move that we close the public hearing and waive the normal rules for case number 2271, proposed zoning from Office Business District to R2 Single Family Residential District, 3273 Palmer Road, southeast corner of Vanoye and Palmer, and send it on to the City Council with a recommendation for approval, subject to departmental requirements and recommendations.
Is there a second? Okay, motion by Swokas, second by Rounds. Roll call vote please.
Roll call vote to approve case number 2271. Durante.
Yes.
Folks.
Yes.
Hobbs.
Yes.
Hopkins.
Yes.
Richards.
Yes.
Rounds.
Yes.
Estachao.
Yes.
Swokas.
Yes.
Rapoport.
Yes.
Motion is approved.
Your petition will be forwarded to the, to the, to the City Council with our, with our recommendation for approval. You can contact the Administration for next steps if anything's unclear. And I'd like you to hang around because it looks like you're also the subject of our next item.
Thank you, thank you.
Moving on to our last item on the agenda, case number 2271A, proposed land division for the, for the property at 32730 Palmer Road. Also, petitioner Ejon Cake. Administration, is there anything that you had to add to your prior, to your prior presentation?
Just one quick thing. I do want to mention on the record that these parcels are all compliant with the R2 Single Family zoning designation as it relates to lot width and lot frontage. Each lot will be 9,555 square feet with 69 feet of frontage along Palmer. And those are all exact same dimensions for all three parcels. Thank you.
Thank you very much. So we, just for personal clarification, we will not have a situation where we get one, then two built, and then the third one is non-compliant?
No, hopefully not.
That will not happen?
No.
Okay, fantastic. If I can have the petitioner please rise to the podium. Once again, this is a, this is not a special land use this time. However, we still like to open it up to the, to the citizenry. I'm going to ask, but I doubt anybody's going to rise. If anybody would like to speak on this matter to my right? Seeing none. If anybody would like to speak on the land division to my left? Seeing none. Thank you very much for joining us, James. Now I'm going to open it up to the, to the board. Is there anybody on my right that wishes to address the petitioner? Anybody on my left wish to speak to the petitioner? Nobody wishes to speak to the petitioner, which is a shame because you seem like a very, very nice fellow. I am very, very pleased to have your, to have your interest in building housing. Once again, as it was mentioned before, housing is a big issue these days and it's good that we have people like you building, hopefully affordable housing for our residents. We appreciate you.
We'll try.
With that, a motion is in order.
I make a motion?
I would like to recognize Sam Durante to make that motion.
I make a motion that we send case number 2271A, proposed land division on Palmer Road to the City Council with a recommendation for approval, depending on departmental requirements and recommendations.
Support.
Motion by Durante, support by Ruby Richards, and a roll call vote is in order.
Okay, this is a roll call vote to recommend approval of case number 2271A. Durante.
Yes.
Folks.
Yes.
Hobbs.
Yes.
Hopkins.
Yes.
Richards.
Yes.
Rounds.
Yes.
Estachao.
Yes.
Swokas.
Yes.
Rapoport.
Yes.
Motion is approved.
Your petition's been approved by, or been recommended to the City Council for approval. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Next item on the agenda is Commissioner's comments. We'll begin down at the end with Sam Durante. Is it going to be something about going out to dinner?
Okay, I just want to make a note that the Relay for Life of Western, of Westland, Western Wayne County invites you to kick off on the 25th. It's our 25th year of fighting cancer. It's next Tuesday, February 11th, at 6:30 here at City Hall. Thank you.
Thank you very much for that, Sam. Recognizing Daryl Rounds.
Good evening. Is this one? I just want to say, prior to the meeting, I alerted the board of a family loss that we experienced, so I'm just really thankful for your concern and for your support and just kindly request your prayers for our family at this time. And thank you.
Thank you, Daryl. Recognizing Deanna Estachao.
Our condolences to you and your family. Losing any member of your family is always very difficult, but when you're talking about a young child like that, it's one years old, it's very touching. Also too, I'm really pleased to see that people are interested in building homes and bringing that new complexes to us in Westland here. And we definitely are happy to see that. So thank you so much for doing that and we encourage many people to build here because it's a great place to live. Thank you.
Recognizing Brian Hopkins.
Commissioner Rounds, you will be in my prayers. I feel very deeply for your loss. I'm so very sorry and if you need me, I'm here for you. I am also very excited to see investment in the city as far as residential. It's always very nice. And I also wanted to congratulate my daughter, a Westland student at Stevenson. She is being inducted into the National Honor Society, so I am very proud of her. And that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Recognizing Ruby Richards.
Yes, my condolences go out to Daryl Rounds and his family. Yeah, someone that young, I can only imagine. And congratulations to Hopkins and his daughter. And to Mo over there, you look so sick. I hope next time we see you, you're looking much better. So all I can say is everybody, when we go home this month, just take care of ourselves so we can all be here next month. All right.
Thank you very much, Ruby. Commissioner Hobbs.
My condolences to your family. That's horrible to go through. I'm very sorry. Congratulations to your daughter as well. And again, everyone, take care of yourselves. Wash your hands. Yeah, just take care of yourselves, take care of the people around you and thank you to everyone for being here, especially you, Mo.
Thank you, Commissioner Hobbs. Commissioner Swokas.
Well, first I want to say, Daryl, you know, it's never easy to lose someone, but we know with our faith and our beliefs that, you know, the promises are real, but it still doesn't change that. And, you know, I'll be thinking of you and the family and praying and holding you up and, you know, just take it one day at a time. Second thing I want to say to Brian and his daughter, you tell the bug that her Uncle David's proud of her, but we knew she could do it. She's quite an amazing kid and I will say Brian's got two wonderful kids and an even greater wife, so, you know, they're awesome. But the other thing I wanted to recognize, that some people, some of us were not able to attend on Martin Luther King Day and it was also inauguration day and the last day of, of an administration and a new administration coming in. But a super congratulations to Vice Chair Ruby Richards on her well-deserved leadership award on behalf of the city. You know, you have done so much in the city in just a short 15 years. I can only imagine what it's going to be like when you hit 25 and then 30 and however much longer you want to keep going and that. But we're really proud of you and I'm personally proud of you because I know what a sacrifice it is to get involved and do stuff and you're an asset to the community and an asset to this commission. And Mo, go home, let Tiffany take care of you and just come, take it easy.
Thank you, David. Commissioner Fox.
Yes, I'd just like to say that it's a pleasure to be here tonight. It is a good night. Got a quick meeting, so I'm excited about that. And also, Daryl, like we discussed earlier, my condolences to you. I understand what you're going through, so let me know if you need me. And the last thing I have is that I'm also excited about this property, the last one in that area, because it seems like that always gets neglected and that area definitely needs some, some building and some new housing for people that want to live on that end. And with that, that's it for me.
Thank you very much. Anything from the Administration?
Just wanted to say my condolences as well and have a happy February, everyone. Thank you.
Nicole, you have anything?
I'm very sorry, Daryl. You and your family will be in my prayers.
And now for the chair. So, as the board has almost every single one of us expressed, and I'm sure everybody feels it, deepest condolences to you and your family. Every soul brings a light to the world and that light doesn't diminish when they pass. That light guides us, that light makes us, drives us on to, to unknown areas. It's a beacon and may the memory of your loved one be a beacon to you. I'm very sorry for your loss. Congratulations, sincere congratulations to Ruby on her, on her honor. It's, I know you expressed to me misgivings whether you deserved that honor before you received it and I wanted to say most definitely you absolutely have earned the recognition that you, and I was speaking to another, to another board member on this very issue and... and both she and I were flabbergasted with what we didn't know that you did. So by all means, you are, you are a remarkable woman and very, very worthy of recognition. And thank you very much for what you do. Please keep doing it. With that, a motion to adjourn is in order. Recognizing, recognizing Deanna Stachow and Ruby Richards for the second. All those in favor, please indicate so. Aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. The ayes have it. Let's go home. Thank you very much, everybody.